Good evening.
I'd like to call this evening's order, roll call. Mr. Daniel will be absent this evening. Mr. Mieres is not here yet. Grab the vote.
Here.
Dr. Sally.
Here.
Mrs. Willis.
Yeah.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in newspapers and reports with the public, meaning that it closely is required by law. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have one thing on the road. Dr. Sally?
Good evening, everyone. Tom McSally, University of Long Branch. I have two handouts that were given to you in your packet today. One is on the health benefits renewal for the city. In front of you, you see that in, from 2018 to 2019, the health benefits increased 1.34%, $70,000. A portion of that should be absorbed by increases in Chapter 78 for some of the employees. The dental was flat, life insurance is flat, and the vision plan is also flat. This year, we went out and received our loss information from the state health benefit plan to see if it made sense to go into the conventional market for ultimate quotes. Unfortunately, our loss ratio was averaging at 105%. So it made sense that we stay with the state health benefit plan for fiscal year 2019. And it's been beneficial to the city over the last couple of years from a financial standpoint. Any questions on the health benefits?
What did you say the increase was for?
1.34%.
1.34%?
Yes. So 70,000, a total of $70,000 from what was paid in 2018 calendar year.
Thank you.
In front of you, we have the 2019 property casualty insurance. We are finishing up our three-year term with the statewide joint insurance fund. And as we've done in previous three-year cycles, we will go out competitive again this year sometime in September. We'll exercise our right under the bylaws of the EJF and seek ultimate quotes from various joint insurance funds. But in front of you, you'll see the 2019 renewal. It is to the dollar the same cost that we had for the last, since 2016. We were able to reduce a little bit of the increase on the fixed costs from the previous year by reducing our loss fund. We reduced that because we've had, reduced our deductibles. And we've had a successful six months with the legal representations by Mr. Renone's firm on handling some of the cases. We disposed of a few and we were successful in another few. So I'm confident that the reduction that I put in will be beneficial to the city. But it's a favorable renewal to the city, even though our payroll has gone up and some of our expenses have increased. So we had a favorable renewal.
Thank you.
Any questions on the property casualty?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is the Jersey Bike Share Program.
This is John Kelly. He's a representative of T3 GM. And we invited him here to appear in front of council to talk about the bike share program.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So in front of you, you have some information regarding our perfect old Jersey bike. Currently, we have 1,000-plus bikes in Hudson County, extending and launching in Woodbridge Township starting in April, as well as Point Pleasant Beach. Each municipalities are due to receive 100-plus bikes. Been trying for the last couple of years, as Jake knows, I'm trying to get Long Branch involved. We see a lot of potential with Long Branch. We've been speaking to adjoining townships since municipalities closer, being up towards the Highlands and down to Seabright. In regards with the ferry expansion down there comes from Bayonne. Bayonne's going to be running the sea street down to the Highlands and stopping in Sandy Hook as well. We will be putting bikes down at the expanded ferry terminal in Bayonne. So our product will be there. And we see users coming down here, whether it's seasonal or whether it's regular constituents are going to use the program. Additionally, you have a large population down over by Pier Village. There's dorms there for Monmouth University. So we see usage for that as well. And with the bike share program, you're promoting health and wellness. You're taking less cars off, you're taking more cars off the road, so you have less, you reduce pollution, you're promoting exercise. I'm just trying to do it quickly because I know you guys are pressed for time. The bikes have advertising panels on them. So that keeps the cost of the program down. I fund the program. My firm does. So it costs the taxpayers and the city of Long Branch nothing. All we ask is to use parcels of land to install the docks on. Because the system is dock-based, you do have to return the bike to an available dock. No dock is available. You could lock the bike to the nearest dock possible or in a zone that we call geofence zone. So it's electronic zone, you can find on the smart app or on the phone. Going back to the advertising panels, helps fund the program. We employ a local bike shop or a local bike enthusiast to help us maintain and run the program locally. So with that, we would bring anywhere between five to 10 jobs to the city of Long Branch, as well as possibly using a local warehouse facility to store our bikes as needed or extra parts as needed. Program costs about $95 a year to be a member. You have access through any of the Jersey Bike programs throughout the state. That gives you unlimited 45-minute rides. You could pay per month $12.95 or pay as you go, $3.30 for 30 minutes. Most users tend to do the monthly membership or the yearly membership. It's cost-effective. We subsidize for low income for those who can't afford. Program will be free to them. I'll kind of end on that and open the floor up to your questions. Kind of, are you going to have?
Can you talk about other people that you've approached in our areas, for example, Monmouth University?
Yes. Many, many talks with Monmouth University. They're basing their decision on what the city of Long Branch is going to decide. So right now, we estimate about 100 bikes, but that's probably going to be closer to 150 to 200. The system is organized. So I will, there will be a fleet manager down here and a program manager down here. You're not going to find bikes laying on the floor or on the side. If a bike is out of zone, it will be brought back to an appropriate zone. Users tend not to do that, being that the credit card information is stored and, you know, they'll be charged a set fee for leaving the bike out. So we don't really see that too often. It happens, but it's not, it's not a rapid occurrence. Belmar was approached, Seabright, Seagirt. Bayhead is interested. Just about all the short towns we've met with, you know, thanks to one of our consultants, Craig Brody, who's been back and forth for many meetings. And they're, they're assessing and probably going to go to bid and we'll respond to the bid. Towards the short towns would be a program that's run for anywhere from seven to nine months and then the bikes placed in storage and taken out as needed.
So you said, like, you've been negotiating with Long Branch for a while?
This is my first time in front of council, but we've had meetings with Jake for a few, you know, a few times approached.
So what were, like, just some of the concerns and how were they risen?
Well, one major concern was how does Long Branch make money from this?
Okay.
After we recoup our cap, there is a shared revenue stream. You know, I'll be honest, it's not going to be a lot, you know, no one's getting rich off of it. But it's about providing a program to your constituents to use, you know, taking cars off the road, promoting exercise. You know, it's going to be used, you know, university students are going to use them. I'm going to, when I come down the weekend, I'm going to, I will promote the whole for using it. You know, leaving my car parked and take the bike around, around the city, around the beach. So it's, it's going to be more for convenience. You know, you want to go to the train station, you know, if you live a mile or two miles away, it's 65 degrees out. Take the bike, you know, so that you have a station there.
Yeah. I think it's, I think it's great. What, I'm just thinking about the streets and safety on streets that were...
Yeah, we work with, we'll work with you guys to promote safety and proper bike etiquette. We do a lot of local events. If you have a street fair or there's a, there's a city fair going on, we'll come down, we'll put up a tent, we'll educate the users. In the past, I've donated helmets. Many of our other cities do either fall or summer fitness event and get the bike share program involved. We go down, we'll unlock a fleet of bikes, have users, constituents get on the bikes, use them, try them out. I'll pick up a helmet. I'll donate X amount of helmets.
Yeah, I can see, you know, kind of falls on both sides and can appreciate everything that you do, that you have said. You know, I'm thinking maybe not necessarily for discussion right now, but, you know, are our streets, do we have enough, you know, are they, are they, you know, a bike there and all that kind of stuff?
There's some narrow streets in Hoboken and we've been, we've been pretty lucky.
And I'm not saying that as a deterrent. I'm just saying that as something that, you know, we need to be, we need to be aware of.
Why 30 minutes?
It's actually kept at 45 because it's a bike share program, not a bike rental. So doesn't mean you can't take the bike to CVS, lock it, go buy what you need to buy there and get back on the bike and you start a new run. You know, I guess you don't want to be called a bike hawk, really. You know, it's meant to be used by everyone. So if one person has a bike, you know, and is not using it, another individual could walk up and take it.
Do you provide bikes for, like, the tricycles for adults that I see sometimes on the road?
No. These are regular, regular pedal bikes they have to use.
And you provide helmets with each bike?
I don't provide helmets for each bike, but if you're running an event or some type of affair or promotion, I will put in to donate helmets. An X amount of number of helmets and it's up to, you know, whoever wants to stop by to pick up a helmet, you know, user, they'll just show me their app and we'll give them the helmet.
And how do you accommodate those that are, have low income?
The program's free for them.
Yeah. And how do you do that? Because...
That's the, you guys tell me, you know, if you want to station in a certain area, if there's low-income housing and they could sign up, you know, anonymously and we could give them access to the program. You know, we could advertise it, you know, free for low income or those who can't afford. Not everybody could afford a car or maybe, you know, a bus pass. So there'll be bikes there hopefully for them to use. There's a basket in front so they can put their bag, a knapsack or a small grocery bag.
So you don't require, like, a credit card from them or anything?
No, it would be set up so that way they don't have to put their information in. Those that don't have a credit card, there's a, like a, might be like a gym tag. If you're going to go to the gym, you have a little key tag for your car keys. It'd be something like that, like an RFID card. If you just tap the back of the bike and enter in a generic PIN number and they'll have access to the bike.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So just practically, how does it work? In other words, you go to a pay station?
No. You would download the app on your phone.
Oh, so it has to be downloaded on?
Correct. Yeah. You won't see any ugly pay stations. The docks are very small. About eight and a half feet will get you about six bikes. So eight and a half feet long and about four and a half feet wide gets you, gets you about six bikes in a location. The docks are anchored into any flat surface. That's flat paved surface, whether it's cement or tar. We can't install on grass for safety reasons because you could tip the dock over. Takes about 25 minutes. So if you don't, if you tell me, John, there's an area that no one's using these bikes, I want them over here. Okay? So it takes 25 minutes to take up and install on that area. It's very convenient.
But do you monitor that too?
Oh, yeah. We will share that information if and when deployed, you know, and all through heat maps. And I could tell you who's male, who's female, who's the average age, you know, and all that. I could share all that information with you.
So John, can you go through the process? In other words, I'm a user.
Sure.
I download it, I can download it from home that I'm going to go to the location or do it on the spot?
You can go to the Google Play Store, go to your Apple App Store and download next bike and it'll come up Jersey Bike and takes about two seconds.
So then I go there, how do I engage, get the bike out of the locked position?
Create a username real quick and you'll, it'll scan your credit card and you can enter it in on your debit card. And you select you want to use, you know, by the hour, become a monthly user or become an annual user. So you have that option to select that. And then if you select it annually, so you can rebuild $95 and you'll have unlimited 45-minute rides.
So then you go to a next location and it locks in somehow and then the next user can come in and do the same thing?
Yeah, the bike, the bike's pretty cool. Has an electronic lock on it. So you can take this bar out and goes into the front of the bike and you could lock the bike if you, like I said, if you're going to go to CVS or you're going to go out to E and you could leave the bike there. But that terminates your ride, so you're not going to be charged anymore. Now if someone else comes along and sees a bike there, no one's using it, I could get on and I can start in the run.
Well, wait, wait a second. You have to go from one where the bikes are locked in to another place where the bikes are locked in.
Correct.
So, yeah, so the location of these lock boxes or whatever?
Well, there's a map there. If you look on the map, it's kind of sporadic and from what I know from traveling down here, seems to be pretty trafficked areas. But that doesn't mean, you might want to say, John, let's put a virtual zone over, over here. And like you create a 10 by 10 area where you can, you know, lock bikes and have them neatly on their kids' stand.
We were just talking about insurance.
I'm fully insured. The city gets listed on our policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, you can, I'm sorry I'm late, I missed a little bit.
It's okay.
You can get from point A to point B and drop the bike off at point B, right?
Correct.
When you get to point B, if there's no slot for the bike?
Then you could park it next to the nearest dock. The bikes get locked for themselves electronically. You know, you won't be charged. If you are charged, you're refunded. It rarely happens. Most of the time, the app picks up where you are. So it's pretty accurate.
Okay. Because if there's no slot for it, it's not on the register.
It happens. If you ever in Hoboken, you come out the path's terminal, you'll see I have about 100, 110 bikes outside there now, between a two-block radius. Sometimes that happens. But you could lock it to a generic bike ride as well.
So how long is the program? What's the process if we wanted to proceed with this?
You would go to bid, we'd respond, you know, back and forth between the red line of contract on your terms, of course. And once that's signed and executed, I place the order. So you're looking anywhere between six to seven, maybe eight months. The bikes are built by hand in Germany and then shipped here. So I'm not recycling product. You're getting brand-new bikes. You know, and during that duration gives us time to correctly pick out the correct locations, maybe insure a sponsor, whether that's a local sponsor or you have someone at mine, like a local big box chain, or, or maybe it's a car dealer, or, or maybe it's the city itself. I just, there's an example on there, you can see what the panels look like. So during that timeframe, you give us time to fully set up the program and then come to a nice ribbon cutting lock. So we're not just going to come in and dump bikes here and we get about you. During that time, I spend a lot of time here. You get to know me on a personal basis. We go out into the street together to map out location. The advertising is key. Now, along with that is also, I don't think I have a picture of it there, there's a, there's an eight by eight static advertising panel that has a solar panel on the top. That gets placed in commercial zones, so it's not going to be in residential areas. That helps fund the program as well. We sell that through our advertiser.
You get the advertising or?
Through, through Capital Outdoor does. It's one of, it's like a clear channel.
I'm not sure I understand that. Where are the, where are these signs?
There are eight by eight panels, they're static panels. They have solar panel on them.
But where, but where are they?
They would be put in commercialized zones. So it's not going to be in a residential area. So you would share with me a tax map and we would look through the commercialized areas where we're able to install these.
I mean, you, what, what does that, what does?
It helps fund the program.
Yeah, but that's effectively, it's just outdoor advertising, right?
Yes.
Which is not permitted, which is undoubtedly not permitted in most of the zones, so...
Well, we'd have to look through that. And all of our other areas have these panels installed throughout Hudson County and they're being installed in Woodbridge at Point Pleasant Beach. So it keeps the cost of the program low.
So these are installed at your, where your bikes are?
No.
This is just completely separate business?
It's not a separate business. It's through the same program.
No, but what I'm saying is it's a completely, it's got nothing to do with, nothing to do with bikes.
Oh, no, no. I'm sorry, yes.
You're putting up signs all around town and you're advertising.
It still says Jersey Bike on there, but it's still...
But you're selling advertising for anybody.
Advertising for... Not just anyone. We approve the client before it gets put on.
But I mean, somebody other than you. It's not advertising the bike.
Yeah. It's one of our partners.
And do we have any say with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
How big are these signs?
Eight by eight.
Does the city have to sign a yearly contract?
I'm sorry?
Does the city have to sign a yearly contract?
No. No, the contract is meant to be anywhere between three to five years.
Okay. And then, did I understand you to say $12.95 was a membership?
Yes, $12.95 per month.
Right. And $95 a year?
Correct.
And how are you going to separate people who are low-income from those of us that could afford it? Is there going to be a set?
If they are willing to come out and disclose that information privately, then we are, we're able to sign them up and get them on a line.
Do you have a threshold?
No. I mean, that's, that's, having the advertising is one of the, the reasons why we were able to fund and provide that service.
Mr. Kelly, to Mr. Renone's point, the, this advertising component, that's optional or that's a commitment to the program?
No, it's, it's a commitment to the program.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Because I'm sorry, I was a little confused.
Yeah. It's, it's built into the contract, the panels there. We require at least a minimum of three. We're not going to put anything derogatory on there. And obviously, the campaign is run by you guys before anything's put up there.
Were there eight-foot by eight-foot panels that you typically in Hudson County put where? Like, how are they?
They're in commercialized zones by themselves, not near any other, because we get approval by NJDOT before installing any installation of outdoor advertising. You can't put them between 150 feet to the nearest competitor. So if there are any competitors in your town or city, we don't tap into any electric. There's a small solar panel on top that generates a three and a half to four-hour battery. So they're lightly illuminated in the evening and then they turn off.
So where would I typically see this on, like, in Long Branch or in Hudson County?
I would have to look at the map.
But in Hudson, where would I see?
In Hudson? There's probably about 50 panels in Hudson County. Bayonne has about six of them already with two more going in.
No, but where, where? Where the main attraction is on the sidewalk, are they?
Yes, they're on the sidewalk. Where the sidewalk is allotted, like, we're in front of a shop right on Avenue C in Bayonne. The sidewalk is maybe 18 feet wide and it's enough room for, for both lanes of traffic for pedestrians to walk by. So it's not going to distract a driver, you know, it's meant for really people walking by. So you could put it in an area typically like that.
And how is it posted or how is it?
It's just, it's just two static panels. So the panels don't move and they're either four- to six-month campaigns. So they go in, you just go in with a key. It's a spring, it's a glass panel that has a spring that goes in, replace the poster and close it.
So they're not digital?
No, they're not digital.
But they're lit?
They're, they're not bright, but they are dimly lit in the evening.
Well, you have a solar panel, so it's still, it's a light.
Yeah.
And when you say with the contract, a minimum of three, is that based on, what is that based on?
Based on size and density. I mean, Long Branch is quite large. Yeah. So again, we would have to divert to the tax camp to see where your commercialized zones are, where your industrial zones are, and then that's where they would be placed.
And so would it be three or would it be more than?
It can be more than three. We require a minimum of three.
It's based on some formula that you've put together?
I could provide that to you.
The question is, I'm not sure, but I'm going to guess that signs that, that, those signs, A, they're bigger than what your zoning ordinance allows, and B, signs that advertise something that's not on the property where the sign is, it's going to be the billboard that is probably not permitted in virtually all of the zones. So it's a non-permitted sign. Now, you want to, so you're going to secure locations for this or do you expect to put it on public property?
No. I mean, we would pick out locations together.
But it's not a question of picking out. Okay, you'd be putting it on our property or somebody else's property?
If the owner of the property, if they're zoned in a, in a industrial, commercial zone and if they're okay with it, then yes, it can be installed on their property.
Are these bikes going to be available all year round, this, our yearly program?
For the city of Long Branch, yes. But I'd be happy to go back and forth with that, the advertising.
So, you're right.
Am I right or what?
Was there more to that?
No, no, no. I'm fine.
Okay, so...
I'm not the zoning officer. I'm calm.
Yeah. So with the timeline you mentioned, there would be no way of getting this operational by the summer, correct?
Maybe late summer.
Yeah, but we're missing, yeah.
You know, it's not, you know, it's not something that we want to rush into doing.
Right.
I mean, other competitors have done that and now I have them calling me.
Yeah.
You know, closest one being Asbury.
Yeah. Well, and that was my next question. If, if all of us wanted to go out on a Saturday morning and try this, try this out, where do you recommend we go?
Mayor Steve Reed of Point Beach actually has one bike in his garage that he rides around.
Oh, no, if we wanted to go and see the whole, yeah, just like John was saying.
Closest would be Bayonne or Hoboken and, and you could take a ride.
Or if you ever go to Manhattan, I mean, they're all over.
Yeah.
That's, that's city bike. That's our competitor.
Well, no, I mean, with the concept.
The concept is...
Yeah. Okay. So Bayonne would be the closest.
Yeah. But I'm, if you want to email me or call me, I'd be happy to meet you, you know, anyone over there and provide a demo.
I knew a field trip was coming up.
The bikes are about 45 pounds, so you don't want to take them with you. They're, they're a little heavy, but they are very comfortable.
If you want to use them, you're going to have them in Asbury.
I would, I hope to be in there and once they're, because their contract for their competitors up and they're not too happy with them. I've had some meetings with them. But yeah, if you want to ride your bike from here to Asbury, you could leave it there.
John, who do you, I mean, you're familiar with the area, obviously. I see that you provided some information, possible locations. Who do you typically see, like, in your area as, as the users for this?
We, you know, we get that question a lot and everybody who says, oh, the younger millennials are going to use them. Turns out, in most cases, it's quite the opposite. You find it's a very mixed-use program. We've got a lot of council members of Bayonne wind up using the program now and they were kind of laughing at us. Oh, I'm never getting on that bike, but I like it. And, you know, four months later, you know, I've been on the, I can't get myself off the bike. So we see a lot of mixed use. In your area, you're going to have a lot of college and university students using it, you know. You have dorms right over here that are in your city and they're going to go back and You have dorms right over here that are in your city and they're going to go back and forth to the university. You know, I understand the shuttle was maybe cut or, or they stopped that service, so now they're going to have that option, you know, take a bike instead of, instead of waiting for a ride or an Uber, you know, you have a, you get your exercise energy, it's healthier. Again, it's a less car on the road, so.
So, John, I'm going to drop this question as a few, like, where are we in the process? If we wanted to just explore it further, what, what would that look like?
Well, it would be whatever way you choose to do so. This is really an introductory presentation for you to consider it. But again, the key element is when you make the decision, you know you're looking at several months before the rollout. And I do think to one topic, which I don't recall, and our discussion was those, those advertising. I don't remember that, I think that's a key element, you've really got to be comfortable with. Eight by eight is pretty big. Again, each where, do you have locations identified in the beach?
Again, you guys have to send me a tax map.
No, I mean, Point Pleasant Beach.
Yeah.
No, they said there.
There's, there's, there's three meant to go when they're commercialized zones.
Do you know where?
Kind of.
Do they allow you to make a boardwalk or?
No, whenever, put them on the boardwalk. They're going to be near, you know where Spikes is when you make that left? I guess that continues when you go over the bridge and to the left, I guess, you want to go to Spikes Fish Market on your way towards the lobster park. Yeah, that's, that's a, that's a commercialized zone. There's a secure area there that's a large enough a panel to go there. There's an area near the train station that's commercialized and there's an area off there, Main Street, towards the end of where the, kind of the restaurant stop. There's a steakhouse there and there's a, a B two bistro is over there and that's an area where a panel can go.
So you're not talking on the sidewalks?
Um, it would be off, you know what, I guess where a parking meter would kind of go, that they would line up.
So you don't know where, you're putting them this way?
Any way you want me to, that it's approved by the NJDOT. They come out and they approve. They approve, uh, NJDOT approves all outdoor advertising. Prior to installation, they sign up on the permit, they go to the site and inspect it and okay.
Yeah, no, no, not, 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 that might be something given, but they don't approve all signs that are on our.
For, for, for our product, they have to.
Right, I can understand why, is it a local zoning issue? You're thinking about state, state highways, they do this specific.
No, we, we, they've been doing it for locally, although in Hudson County, they made more recently. I'm dealing with them in Bayonne and they have my permits for locations that are set in Woodbridge Township.
Could you send some pictures of your advertising in place so we can sort it out?
Eight by eight is mighty big. That's from here to you.
It's a, a little smaller. I would say it's about as wide as.
It's a piece of sheetrock.
Yeah, well, this six foot table right here.
No, it's actually bigger than that. Did you say eight by eight?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's about this way. And I'm, I'm five nine, five ten.
It's a little, little small in this way, I guess.
Two sheets of, it's pretty big.
Some, some real live pictures of that, show it to the county.
I mean, that helps fund our program, so, you know, competitors are at a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year and more. I mean, we're employing local constituents down here, you know, up to ten of them. It helps us buy a Sprinter van so we could repopulate the bikes. I mean, someone has to be doing that almost twenty-four seven, seven days a week we have someone working. So it's not, like I said, we're not going to leave you high and dry. Someone will be on the ground here working seven days a week.
And you said you employ how many people?
Anywhere between five to ten, especially down here, because you're going to have a large number of bikes. You're welcome.
So, I, I think it's worth pursuing more, but my, my concerns and the things that I would want to look at is, you know, we talk about bike paths and all that kind of stuff, you know. Where are we with some of those, those things and what are, what's our vision for that component? That's, that's, you know, our, our, our side of it. I'm concerned about safety, especially the, the number of, you know, complaints that we got, people on bikes on the boardwalk and then we divert them right out to thirty-sixth and that whole, whole safety issue. So I'm concerned about preparedness, Long Branch's preparedness for something.
Yeah, we would partner with you that, with you guys for that too, for bike education.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about bike education, I'm talking about physically the bike.
Yeah, we, we do that once a month in Hudson County, we go a little needed for that.
That's, that's wonderful. And I'm also talking about are, are bike paths safe, for example? You know, when, when we divert people from the boardwalk and we put them out on thirty-sixth on a bike, is that a safe thing for us to do, especially when we're talking about more bikes?
We have some rows that have jet outs that are dangerous right now.
So that whole bike safety issue, that, that identifying low income seems, I think there's still a few more questions with, with that and then advertising. Those are the four things that I think we need further discussion on.
Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, how will that happen now? You're going to have to give more information on it and then we'll discuss it again. Mr. Jones, would you like to come over, please?
I received notification that Green Acres is going to prepare to make available another round of funding at the end of March. So we would like to make application, the purpose of this presentation is to get your permission to make application for improvement of one of our local parks. I put before you Jerry Morgan Park and that's an engineer's estimate of some of the upgrades that we are proposing. We've got some, I guess, things within the park that are just not functioning. We have a softball field that's not used, in fact, grass is grown in the infield. We have a handball wall that's quite obsolete and it's used for other things and everything other than a handball game. So we, in this estimate that you see before you are just some of the estimates that we're proposing to do for the park. Bottom line is, Green Acres normally give you a grant of fifty percent. The city has to match that fifty percent grant. So that's basically why I'm here, just to ask your permission to explore this, to see what funding is available. This isn't the only project that we can apply for. Green Acres funding does not limit us to one project. If there are other projects that you may have in mind, we can also make application for those.
So the total costs that you have, have there, we would have to pay half of that?
Yes.
Jake, for the, for the, for the audience or for the viewers, can you just go through this, what you're proposing here in Jerry Morgan's?
The softball field again is not used. It's actually undersized, it's not regulation zone, it was underutilized to begin with. We're proposing to convert that to a soccer field. The dimensions are there to have a regulated soccer field. Again, the handball wall in the back, if you know the outway of Jerry Morgan Park, that handball court is not used. People go back there and they hire and do whatever mischief things that poses a problem for the city. We are just asking that we take the handball wall down and put up a regulation basketball court. And then we'd like to fortify that with fencing, twelve foot high fencing, that would keep those using the court in and keep them protected. Also would provide easy access for the police to get to. Something goes on there, you can see it, it's quite visible from all aspects of the park. And there are some other small amenities, landscaping, taking out bleachers that don't quite work, putting in bleachers that do. There's some netting on the south side of that park that was, it's never properly put up, so we need to take all of that down and make that part, more attractive. So these are some of the amenities we're talking about. The big function would be the soc, the soccer field and then the basketball courts and the basketball.
And when you say you can split it up, you mean we can look at other options or we could use something here and something there as part of the same grant?
Yeah, we made applications to Green Acres in the same year for different areas of the city. There was some project regarding Fountains Creek and then we did another section. I think they, they funded one, they'll give you one project. At some, you know, if you make your pitch right, they may fund two. We're not asking for a lot of money here, they funded us up to one point something million in the past. So we're asking for less than three hundred thousand on this project. As I said before, they make available to municipalities such as Long Branch, up to one point five million, as long as you have a match. When we did that Asa Creek Park, we asked for nearly a million dollars and we got it. So this is a small project compared to the availability of funding. And again, the city, if you have, I talked to Rose before we had the meeting, she was talking about some, making some improvements here next to City Hall. John, we met, talked about, talked about the same thing, but to date the upgrades have not been made. So if we can get a good cost estimate made up and some scope of work drawn in by one of our engineers, it's possible we can make application for that too, for some upgrades in and around Lord Broadway.
Jake, I'm sorry, meaning to include this and some others?
I'm sorry, John?
So, so we could ask for this in its, in its entirety as you're requesting it and something else?
Yes.
Or?
I, I mentioned to Jake prior to the meeting possibly looking at some areas in the uptown area that can be improved for park. We've spoken about it and he said that we can include that in as well, so.
Yeah, normally if you acquire property, Green Acres may fund seventy-five percent of an acquisition, but when you're doing development, they will fund fifty percent of that. So if there's a place that the city wants to acquire to add to the glossy of your recreation open space inventory, that's a seventy-five, twenty-five percent match, so, just to let you know.
How do you determine what you're going to apply for?
We usually leave it to mayor and council, or I met with Mr. Jennings, the recreation director, and he just pointed out some of the problems with Jerry Morgan Park. So that's how we came up with this. But anything that you see in the city, we're working on the bulkhead now with Fountains Creek. Anything that's open space that needs upgrading, it's, it's the call of the mayor and the council.
And when does it do, when is the grant due to be submitted?
March thirty-first.
Okay.
You know, this isn't set in stone, I have some exploration to do on this. So we'll see, you know, the availability of funding. We've got some problems to solve right now with Green Acres, so we have to talk about that. But we just want to get a jump on things. The last thing we want to do is be late and try to make application, so we're just trying to get a jump on things.
Any other questions?
Well, you know, like you said you're coming to approval to move forward, which that means that we're, we're saying that the match is available.
It's not available yet, the bar, we need to throw a cap load against it.
I don't know if we're quite ready for that, I didn't, I'm really not asking for that at this point.
Okay.
I really need to talk more to Green Acres and see what's available, see how the city stands. But I don't, I didn't want to do work without you knowing about it. So this is just, just a preliminary kind of presentation to make you aware that we'd like to explore this possibility.
Unless they make the award, you've given ample time to secure the rest of the funding.
Yes, the, the award is made and then the bonding comes after that, so. We could put this in and they could reject us.
One, one other advantage of what the type of selection Jake made is, as he mentioned, we have a number of issues that we have to resolve with Green Acres and some of those have to do with parts that there's some disrepair. So really, this is some, these items that he's talking about could end up coming back at us anyway, but we could be told to make these repairs out of our own pocket. So this is probably getting ahead of a potential problem.
I think, to be honest with you, the recreation director is going to ask for this anyway. So I just thought maybe we can do it through Green Acres and save you some money.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ken, thank you. Next, all items reviewed for regular meeting agenda, are there any questions?
Yeah, I'm all right.
Thank you. I need a motion to close.
Someone?
Someone, the second, all favor?
All right.